Good evening, everybody. This is the May 11th meeting of the Carlisle Select Board, and I will introduce the board members who are present currently. I'm Alan Lewis. Barney Arnold is the vice chair, Kate Reed, and Luke Ascalillo. And of course, Tim Goddard, town administrator, is here as well. The agenda tonight will be starting at 7:00 with community input. 7:05 LEPC update from Chief Fisher. 7:15 Planning Board presentation on the annual town meeting zoning amendments for marijuana and also for the Select Board, officially changing the name from the Board of Selectmen to the Select Board. At 7:45, a discussion of the American Rescue Plan Act. We do have some guidance coming from the feds on that. 8:15 Discussion with Drive Tech on SharePoint OneDrive. 8:30, we'll be talking about the town meeting and town election, finalizing the warrant. 9:00 Discussion on new town committees. 9:15 Appointments. 9:30 The Town Administrator's Report. 9:40 Liaison Reports. 9:50 Approval of Minutes and Warrants. 9:55 We will be going into executive session and not returning after that. So let me start asking first, is there any community input this evening? Seeing none, I will then ask Chief Fisher to give us LEPC report.
Thank you very much. Thanks for having me here. I think the news from the LEPC front is very good. So Linda Fantasia reported, I believe there was only one new case in the last 14 days in our town. We have some new guidance from the state in kind of a variety of areas. And Linda and her members of the Board of Health are walking through how that's going to affect us in Carlisle, but it's all good news. From the fire side, of course, our firefighters have been doing testing, COVID testing, and have tested thousands of Carlisle residents, and they've not had a positive test since April 24th. Of course, Council on Aging is running just a variety of great and safe activities. They went through a laundry list of things. If anyone has any interest, check in with them. Carlisle Neighbor Response Team Lori Eckler reported. They have fewer people they're shopping for now. A lot of people are going out and shopping for themselves now. They do still have a few clients that she is really happily working with, she and her folks. Tim Goddard reported, we should be receiving some guidance, and actually, he did send out to those of us who applies some guidance from the American Rescue Act. So some of that was released this week. The schools really just, all good news. They've only had one positive test in the last eight weeks. They continue to do pool testing and have adapted their school activities with the new guidelines from the state Gleason Library. Again, Martha is ramping things up, doing more things in person, not quarantining books any longer. And of course, from the Select Board and the police side, not really any significant news. If you could indulge me for one minute, Chair, one of the things that came out of that meeting was that the LEPC itself has decided to switch to monthly meetings. We're only going to meet the Monday before the Select Board meeting each month. And I think that's significant because this group, the LEPC, has been meeting now for over a year, maybe even closer to a year and a half, weekly, for no less than an hour, up to two hours each week, to talk about safety planning in our town and for each group that was involved to go through their activities and then to work through things. So if you wouldn't mind, because we are shifting gears and going to monthly, and because of this significant time investment, I think the group would say this is nothing short of what normally happens in Carlisle. You have an outstanding group of town employees working with a dedicated group of volunteers to have a really positive outcome. Obviously, fingers crossed, and things continue to go in this direction with this pandemic, but I think it's appropriate this time just to read off some names. And that these are folks that have just dedicated the last year and a half of their Monday mornings for hours to ensure that people in Carlisle are safe. So that's Lori Eckler. Of course, she's from the Carlisle Neighbor Response Team. Linda Fantasia, wearing the hat, Board of Health, as well as the Vaccine Subcommittee and all of her other hats that she wears. Martha Feeney-Patten, of course, our library director there. Tim Goddard is a town administrator at every meeting. Joan Ingersoll from Council on Aging. Christine Lear from School Committee and as a citizen and our clerk. Of course, you, Dr. Lewis, in your role in the Select Board and also from the emergency communication portion. Jim O'Shea, our superintendent of schools. Kate Reed, of course, representing the Select Board. Lauren Sawyer, school nurse. Of course, Chief Sorrows, my cohort over at the Fire Department. And Barney Arnold from the Select Board. And I hope I haven't left anybody off the list, Mr. Chair, but please call me out if I have. But this group of people, I just can't thank them enough. And I know that our citizens just know that's how things work in Carlisle, that we have employees, we have this dedicated group of citizens that always seem to work on things, and the LEPC has been no exception. So I really want to thank them from the bottom of my heart for all their time they've given to this. And I know we're still going to meet monthly, but I thought this is an appropriate time to dole out some thanks. Thank you for hearing me out on that, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, and thank you. We would be remiss if we did not acknowledge the fantastic leadership that you've provided during this past year and a half. When you were made Emergency Management Director, I know this is not what you envisioned. But with the LEPC, which used to meet, you know, once every two years, and we had a tree fall on a wire, has been meeting again, as you said, weekly for a couple of hours generally for a year and a half. And I'll tell you, it was, while much important work was done during those meetings, it was also tremendously enjoyable because of the great spirit, the cooperativeness, the expertise, the willingness to go above and beyond by every single member of that committee. It was truly exceptional, and we will be forever, I think, in the debt of those people who put in all this time because Carlisle has had a really, really successful run at taking care of its residents during this unprecedented time. And so, thank you, and we look forward to meeting you at least once a month. Okay, any questions for the chief? Hearing none. All right. Thank you very much, chief. Planning Board presentation. Let me introduce David Modell, didn't come in here during my initial introductions, but David has now come on, a member of the clerk, in fact, of the Select Board. So let me ask Madeline Blake, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for making time on the agenda for me tonight. As Alan mentioned, I'm Madeline Blake from the Carlisle Planning Board. I saw that you had me on the agenda for both of the proposed zoning bylaw amendments, so I want to touch briefly first on your recommendation to us, which we happily took up to change the name of your body from the Board of Selectmen to the Select Board in the zoning bylaw. We had a public hearing on that last night. There were no public comments received. We did vote in favor of a recommendation to town meeting to make that change. It was actually five to two, which you probably see in the paper, so. I'm afraid that that was my fault because I introduced a bit of levity. We thought that if you ever wanted to move off Select Board, you could consider Wise Ones, but... So it's accomplished, and I'm going to spend the bulk of my time tonight talking about our other proposed zoning bylaw change, which is to amend Section 5.11 of the zoning bylaw to remove the expired temporary moratorium on marijuana establishments and substitute in its place a permanent ban on marijuana establishments in Carlisle. There's two overriding things to keep in mind here and what can sometimes be a complicated and detail-specific topic. This is a zoning proposal. It's arising from the fact that we do not have feasible or appropriate locations for these businesses. I'd like to urge voters not to view this as an opportunity or a context to make a political or a philosophical statement. It should be a practical and prudent consideration of whether we have appropriate locations for these businesses. The second thing to keep in mind, that it's unlikely that any of these businesses would actually try to locate here. They would probably go through the same calculus about how it's not feasible. But the way our regulations are now, in concert with the state law and regulations, we're existing in a state of uncertainty. Therefore, we have risk, we have inconsistencies, and there's no reason that we shouldn't take care of that and adopt prudent, responsible zoning that aligns the law and the regulations that we have with what the actual facts are. There's no benefit to us from continuing to exist in this uncertainty. So I hope everyone will come together regardless of your personal or political views about how you think about marijuana and focus on putting prudent zoning in place. There's actually 30 different decisions that are encompassed in this ban. There are 10 different types of marijuana establishments, and we have three zones in town. We have two business areas and then predominantly residential for the rest of it. The Planning Board focused on two types of establishments as being the most likely candidates. And frankly, when we came out of the April 2009 Spring Town Meeting two years ago, we thought our marching orders were, we've got to find a way to have something because the ban was turned down. So we spent a lot of time talking about these two possibilities. One of them is allowing a retail store in our existing business districts. And the other, which I'll touch on after the retailer discussion, is to allow growers or cultivators throughout town in our residential districts. The reason retailers deserve some attention and some discussion is that this type of business, unique among the 10 marijuana establishments, would provide a benefit to the town if we could find a place to put it. Theoretically, it would allow a benefit to the town. The other nine, there's no benefit to the town to having them. But with the retailer, the law provides that there's a so-called local option tax of 3%. So where a retailer to locate here and make sales, we could charge them 3% on those sales. A retailer couldn't be located in our residential districts because that's just inconsistent with the residential district. So what we considered were the business districts that we have. And I'm sure you guys are probably aware of this, but our business districts are not what most towns have, which is a contiguous, regular area with any kind of volume to it. We actually have five separate business zones in the town center and three along Bedford Road. They're small, they're not touching each other, they're only part of the lot in most instances. And it appears that they arose from probably historical reasons where someone like drew a line or an outline of the footprint of the buildings that existed when the zoning went into place. And I'll, is it okay if I share my screen, Tim?
Yes.
Okay.
She'll be able to do the, yep.
This, I'm sure you guys are familiar with this, but I thought I'd just throw up. This is the town center. This larger area has ferns in it. This is the insurance and real estate office, the dentist office, the insurance building at 50 School Street, and this is the ATM and real estate office. These locations are not appropriate locations for marijuana retailers for three main reasons. They are in close proximity to residences, and in the case of the center business district, three of them are actually attached to residences or part of residences. They're in relative close proximity to the school and places where children congregate. And these locations are not suitable because of their small size, their lack of parking, the fact that they're in an historical district, and it would probably be impossible to satisfy the physical security requirements for marijuana buildings and still be in keeping with the historical district. The same factors apply to the Bedford Road districts. The Kimball's property is actually under a preservation restriction and could not be developed into something else. And that leaves one business district that has the Autobody Store and what used to be the recording studio. And then there's another business district that encompasses the office building at River Road and the We Folks. All of these locations are fully occupied by existing businesses. Some of them have been there for years and years, like over 20 years. So for a business, a marijuana business, to try to locate into town, there's no, like you would have in a typical business district where businesses are coming and going, and some may be vacant at different times, an existing business would have to be displaced. So that's what I have on the business districts. I'm going to pause for a moment. Do you guys have any questions on the calculus that we've gone through with retailers? I mean, I can talk about the revenue a little bit, too.
Anybody have questions? None seen.
Okay. I'm going to move into growers, then. There are two types of businesses of the 10 marijuana establishments that grow marijuana. There's regular growers and craft cultivators, and the craft cultivators, it's really just a different form of ownership. The Planning Board spent a lot of time talking about whether this is something that we should allow throughout the residential districts or potentially on lots above a certain size. And we decided that the impacts from these businesses do not justify allowing this. And again, there's no benefit to the town. And the town probably wouldn't get increased even property tax from allowing this because the homes here are so highly valued, and these warehouse-type buildings that they use most likely wouldn't be as highly valued. These growers are prolific users of water. One of the things that's interesting about this industry right now is because it's illegal federally still, some of the normal sources of information aren't available. We take for granted that there's this cooperative extension, land grant, university agricultural research that goes on, and that has not happened with marijuana, so it's a little hard to dig out what the figures would be. But I found an application from a grower in Sheffield that wanted to grow outdoors on a two-acre parcel, which is about what a home lot is in Carlisle. And they estimated that they would use 750,000 gallons of water a year, which is about 30 times what a home would use. And indoor growers are even more intensive users of water than an outdoor grower would be. There's an odor associated with these businesses, and the ones that I've gone around to look at are kind of unsightly. They have ventilation tubes on them and generators. And it just, it doesn't seem that there's any benefit that would outweigh subjecting people to having that in their neighborhood. So that's what I have on this. I've gone around and talked to a couple boards, the questions I've got on it. You know, I think sometimes people do look at this as something they want to make a statement on. They think marijuana should be treated like liquor, or it shouldn't be demonized or penalized. And I would just like to emphasize it has its own regulatory scheme with its own stringent rules and regulations. It's illegal on the federal level. It's an all-cash business mostly because few banks will deal with them, so the public safety profile of it is not the same, and that's just, those are the conditions that we deal with. So I'd be happy to answer any questions, and I hope that you guys will support this.
Questions from anybody?
Madeline, a very thorough presentation, thanks. I just, I think I know the answer to this, but I just wanted to check. This doesn't prohibit any, or would this prohibit, you know, a homeowner that wanted to grow marijuana in their backyard just for their own personal use?
No, I should have said that at the outset. This has nothing to do with your own personal use or there's a provision that homeowners can grow, I believe it's eight plants, it might be 12, but there's a certain amount they can grow for their own use in their yard or in their greenhouse or whatever.
Barney, you're just asking for a friend, right?
My question is, because we do have the right, you know, to farm in Carlisle, and if it's a commercial, I just want to know how those two bylaws, you know, are going to marry with one another. How does that, how do they interact?
Well, right now, because we don't have a ban, we have uncertainty around those laws. Our zoning bylaw does not define agriculture. However, it says that agriculture is a byright use in residential zones, and it speels off horticulture, floriculture, apparently everything but pig farming and fur farming. There's a case law out there for marijuana that says, even though under the state law, it's not defined as agriculture, in the broad sense of the word, it is, it's growing something. So we right now have that inconsistency baked into our laws where we allow agriculture byright in our residential areas. This is, in some sense, agriculture. But then there's the state law where the Chapter 40 that gives the framework that says we can't ban agriculture in certain areas, that limits marijuana. So there's that inconsistency there. But according to town council, if we enact this ban, it will make it clear that it's not allowed in residential areas.
And should we be thinking about considering revisiting our right to farm, you know, right to agriculture bylaw to define, you know, what fits under there and what doesn't? So that there's, make it crystal clear.
According to town council, if we enact the ban, we don't have to go back and fix those laws. If this ban failed, that's probably something that we have to do is to try to harmonize some of that stuff. But I'm hoping that if we, that's one of the beauties of doing a ban, is it just, it's simple and it takes care of everything. I will, that's, I think I circulated to you guys the letter from town council, and they did talk about that topic. I'll double-check that with them. I'm sure I'm going to be talking to them about some of the finer points before town meeting. But their advice is that putting, enacting this ban will make things clear.
Yeah, I just like, I always like to cross-reference things just so that if somebody looks at one part of the bylaw and they say, hey, is my right to farm and to grow things? And I don't have a list of what's excluded from that list, you know? I just, it's a housekeeping thing that we don't have to do it this time around, but maybe in a future.
That's a good idea. After this, if this passes, we could come back in a prior year and do some cleanup. I didn't want to do that this time because I don't want to get to town meeting and have this contingent. Like if this passes, we do, and if it doesn't, I think that made everyone nuts last time.
And then, Madeline, does this go to the, and this will appear, if it passes a town meeting, it's a 50, it's a majority vote?
No, it's a two-thirds vote. The new law is only for housing-related items.
Okay, and then it'll be on the election ballot, assuming it gets the two-thirds at town meeting?
It'll be on the election ballot either way.
Right, but it won't count if it doesn't pass a town meeting?
Right. Well, theoretically, if it passes, if it doesn't get the two-thirds at town meeting, but we get over 50% at the ballot box, we could try again in the fall or next spring. Okay.
Yeah, and I do want to commend you on, I mean, I read very carefully what was provided to us in written form, and it was extremely well-written and well-documented, so thank you for doing that.
Thank you. We've been working on this for a long time. We were going to try to do it last spring and...
Because as I went through, I kept, I mean, I've thought about some of the things you've raised here about, well, gee, you know, we want to give up all that tax money and realized there really wasn't that much tax money to give up. And the idea of the property tax values and that sort of thing. Each element is very well addressed, I thought, and I think that makes a compelling argument, so thank you, yeah.
Thanks. I mean, one of the interesting things here, I would not be surprised if they take away that 3%. I mean, it was a carrot to get municipalities to do this, and we're up to over 90 stores already licensed with about 70 in the pipeline, and pretty soon, there's going to be so many. I think there's going to be a look at whether the other public policy of reducing the cost of legal marijuana to do more to stamp out the illicit market is going to get tilted more towards that, so.
Okay. Thank you. Any further questions from the Select Board?
My apologies. I need to leave this meeting momentarily to do something for the Board of Health meeting tonight, and I will be back. Shall I go ahead and cast my vote?
Are we voting now or we don't usually vote?
We can do it when we go through the warrant.
Oh, okay. Great. All right. Thank you, Madeline. My apologies.
You'll be back by then, yeah. David, go ahead. You had a question?
Yeah, so just a one, and I agree with Alan, a very well-constructed argument, and I like your approach, Madeline, to approach it from a zoning perspective, not a sort of right-to-smoke perspective or whatever. But I just, my only issue, I guess, is the relitigation issue, and you'll have to refresh my memory. When we voted to approve marijuana or... I mean, is there sort of a double jeopardy for marijuana here? They were approved and now they're being unapproved?
No, there was a referendum in 2016, and our town was what's called a yes town because approximately 52% of our residents were in favor of legalizing marijuana. The zoning question is a different question. There was an issue that a lot of people brought up in 2019 when we brought this forward before, and it was, it went something like this, aren't we being hypocrites? Isn't it immoral to be in favor of having it but not be willing to have the businesses in town? Aren't we being NIMBYs not in my backyard? And I think that question looks very different two years on. The premise of that argument is that these businesses are bad things, and nobody wants them, and we should do our fair share, and that has not proved to be the case. A lot of towns want these, and looking at the different applications, one of the things that these businesses are doing are taking up abandoned buildings, vacant lots that towns were desperate to do something with and putting the businesses there. Some of the towns are, it's worth it for them, they have the right area to host the business, and so they get the tax revenue or the economic development in their town. So I don't think there's anyone out there that's saying like, wow, why isn't Carlisle doing their fair share? If they're thinking about us at all.
Okay, so you answered, you answered one question, so it created another. So I think it was a referendum, though, where, yes, we said in the theory we're supportive of the Commonwealth legalizing marijuana. But in fact, we did the NIMBY thing, we're doing the NIMBY thing, saying, but not in my backyard. Now, you could say there's not a compelling reason to be in the backyard because there's lots of other backyards, but the fact remains, we're saying, good for mass, not good for car. And I'm personally, I support that, but I just think we ought to be clear-headed that we are pursuing a NIMBY. It is a NIMBY thing. Good for mass, not for car. That's what we're saying.
And I guess I would just take issue with you a little bit because NIMBY has a pejorative sense to it, like it's a bad thing that we don't want in our town, and I don't think this is like...
No, 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 you're overlaying something else. I mean, I could say like affordable housing, you know, really light off some people who might listen, you know, is... Nobody would say affordable housing is a bad thing. But we do say, in various ways, it's great for the Commonwealth, it's not so great for Carlisle. I mean, you know, we could say half-acre zoning is not bad, but we say not good for Carlisle. So I don't, I don't mean to think that, I don't think we should be disillusioned that we're free and clear. I do support what you're saying, and I think it's the right thing for Carlisle, but we ought to be, you know, not, what's the word, hypocritical. We should not be hypocritical about what we're saying, which is, it's okay to be legal, but we just don't want to, at least the growing and dispersing.
Well, it's part of a larger question that we just simply don't have locations that are appropriate for a lot of things.
Lots of reasons, lots of reasons. We can't have half-acre zoning because we don't have the groundwork. That's a true statement. But, you know, I'm just saying, we should, like I said, I'm supportive. I'm supportive, but I believe we should not dodge the position we're taking, which is it's not right for a variety of well-thought-out reasons. It's not right for Carlisle, and I agree with you. I'll leave it. Thank you.
Anybody else? All right. Thank you, Madeline.
Okay, thanks, everyone. Have a good night.
Appreciate it. You, too. Moving on to the American Rescue Plan Act. Tim, why don't you take the lead on that?
Sure. Sure. I included in your packet some slides that Priscilla and I got at a webinar a week or so ago about the American Rescue Act. And I think it's easy to see that it's a pretty complex piece of legislation, pretty wide-ranging, and there's a lot of money involved. I think some of the key points is that eligible costs will be things that have a direct bearing on the town's response to COVID. And parts of the act, I think, you know, are more applicable to areas of the country that were hard-hit by COVID, things like unemployment and homelessness and loss of tax revenue. There's support for that, those kinds of things, and that those probably are not the case here. I also circulated the guidance that came out late yesterday from the Department of the Treasury that was a little bit... Uh, that was a little bit general, but I think it it did speak to uh, uh, the general categories of eligibility. I guess without getting into the weeds, as Chief Fisher might say, I think that the town would be well served by having a a uh, a comprehensive prioritized plan for how we're going to deal with this this revenue, this found money, if you will, and and how we're gonna uh, find projects that are that are eligible and and uh, of of high value to the town. Uh, I think uh, we had talked about, you know, how such a committee might be populated, you know, a select board member, a finance committee. I I spoke with Superintendent Jim O'Shea today. He's very interested in being part of it, and I think the schools should certainly have a a seat at the table. And uh, from the town, the the finance department, I think certainly the town accountant, probably the new town accountant should be involved in uh, discussions of what's eligible and what uh, and what is not going forward. So I guess I I'll leave it to the board to decide if if you think a committee is advisable. I do. I think it is, and I know, I know other communities are doing that as well because it's a lot of money. It's more than cares, it's like four times what cares was. Uh, and and we didn't have a plan for spending cares. Uh, and we kind of muddled through that, and I think, I think we ought to have a plan for how we're gonna uh, deal with this funding.
Comments from the board?
I I agree. I think we need to have a plan. How is, is this gonna be? What what, what format of committee is this? Is this a a working group, a task force, a com- a committee?
If if the board appoints it, it's a committee.
Okay, so.
I think it would be an advisory uh, committee to the, to the selectmen who are the ultimate you know, the chief executives of the, of the town.
You know, I, and and I really do feel that the FinCom needs some representation. I'm just wondering about though, the, our bylaw, you know, getting in the way again.
Yeah, I I I read that bylaw a little bit differently. I know, I know town council is gonna be on the call later, maybe we can ask him. But it says that a FinCom member can't be a member of of another committee or or board that is involved in the, with the expenditure of funds. Now, to me, the advisory committee is not the the committee that's spending the funds. I I don't see that any conflict in the the finance committee, you know, there's a lot of value in having them as part of the group. They're not directly spending the funds.
Okay, well, let's see what town council says, because I agree with you on that, but I just would not like to do something that's indirect, you know, conflict with our own bylaw.
So.
Go ahead, David.
Yes, thank you. Um, so Tim, a couple of questions on the presentation. Just actually, just out of curiosity, what's a functional county versus a non-functional county?
Middlesex County, I guess, would be a non-functional county, and the county government no longer exists.
Oh, okay, so no.
We we benefit from that fact. We get the money that would have gone to Middlesex County if it still existed. That's why we're getting.
So the nine hundred forty-two million might be added to the three hundred and sixty-eight million for the small, so there's a big pot of money, right? And how does it calculate, is it divvied up by us proposing projects to be reimbursed? Or do they allocate some money based on our size or some other metric?
I think the formula is based on on population, the size of the community. Uh, all all of the communities in in Middlesex County are benefiting by the fact that there's no county government, so small, even small towns like Carlisle.
So do you have an estimation of the amount of money we might receive? I realize in two tranches?
We we've been told that it it's over one point five million.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so so then you get to the eligible uses, right, which is the key. And and it's pretty broad, right? So is that really what you're saying? The committee just, this, in this particular slide five here? Kind of the one through four reasons we should figure out how to allocate that money? Is that the crux of the, would be the committee's charge?
Yeah, I think it's, it's, uh, I think it's page five to four.
Yeah, right, right.
Exactly, exactly. Those are the the main purposes of the.
Right, so the committee, let's say it's one point five million. They'd say these are the things and that, we don't have to well, I don't know, I I'm sure in audit you have to justify, but we don't have to apply. You get the pot of money and you just make sure that you're spending it on the things that qualify. Is that kind of your read?
Right, well, we're gonna get fifty percent of it uh, this summer, and then the rest of it over a two-year period based on eligible projects that are submitted.
So, and is it, is it backwards looking at all, like item two? Provide premium pay to employees providing essential work during COVID. Is that a backwards look or is everything?
I think that's, that's taking a backwards look at the, yeah. Kind of the beginning of the pandemic and and last year. And and the guide that that came out from the treasury said that the premium pays mostly uh, intended for lower wage workers who were COVID facing during the pandemic. And it's it's not intended as bonuses for, you know, executive level municipal workers. It's more uh, you know, for lower wage workers who really were kind of in the thick of it.
All, anything that we spend money on will have to be justified. Will not be, I mean, it's not simply we we pick pet projects and spend the money. We have to, they'll have to be justified and and may may turn out uh, like the cares money. Uh, some things may not be eligible, even if we think it's appropriate.
See, I'm, that's, you're exactly asking Alan what I'm trying to get at. In other words, here's a bucket of, I mean, I could see one way is to say, here's a bucket of money, Carlisle, spend it on these things, and by the way, we're gonna audit it to make sure you spend it on those, but you don't have to actually apply like to ask, right? The other way is to say, no, here's your budget, and you have to come back and justify what you want to spend it.
I mean, it has been suggested we may have trouble spending this money because of the way the eligibility categories are listed. That we, you know, we didn't suffer great losses.
Right.
We didn't have a lot of businesses which suffered dramatically.
Right, right.
Uh, and so we may, we may not be able to use a great deal of this money.
Right, so let's just say, on that point, let's just say item one, I mean, if we're not really gonna do much backwards looking. Item one, we survived. Item two, we survived. Item three, we survived. So we're at item four. Now, I mean, let's just say, just for talking, that we want to put sewer into the town. And that's a huge bill, and this would help us, but it's not really COVID, right? We would have to tie it to a COVID reason?
Well, yeah, and but for instance, we could put HVAC systems in that gave greater filtration or had had, uh, you know, antivirus capability.
Is that in, you read that as being part of four? Because it's not saying.
The question is, will they? I mean, I think that's, I think that's the kind of thing, at least we would have some uh, legitimate reason for doing.
Okay, so it sounds to me like the committee really has two tasks, two charges. One is to really understand the law and the process before we start encumbering or, you know, otherwise putting our own funds at risk or whatever, right? And then the second one is to decide from whatever eligibility, which projects would make it to the list.
I mean, I think originally, one of the concerns was, you know, everybody's gonna be asking for this money. And, you know, we're we're gonna have to have some controls on how it's doled out. That probably is the least of our problems. I mean, more importantly, will be understanding what the regulations are, looking at what our risk is, if we, if we spend money and then it's not reimbursable.
Right.
Uh, that sort of thing.
Right, so, okay, so that, you know, that somewhat changes the group of people who might be desired to be on the committee from you know, prod, subject matter experts on projects to subject matter experts on, you know, the intricacies of budgeting and legal and stuff like that, right?
Yes.
Okay, all right. I mean, okay, that's all I have, thank you.
All right, other comments, questions? Request for money?
Looking at the list, I I'm wondering if our welfare, you know, um, social, sorry. Social worker doesn't still fit under some of that from, but anyway, well, that's something that we have to be talking about. So certainly, somebody from Board of Health needs to be on this thing.
Yep. Alrighty, uh, I guess one of the decision that we need to make is we don't have to populate the committee today, but we should establish it if we're going to do that. And so I would accept a motion uh, to establish the committee, and then we can discuss it. We have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion.
Nope.
Hearing none. We'll have a roll call vote. Barney's not here, so he screws up the alphabetical order.
Ask Kalilai.
Louisai.
Mode Lai.
Reedai.
Motion passes, thank you.
I just wanna, I want to point out that actually having the first person alphabetically to not be there does not screw up. He's actually the only one. Maybe Kate, that does not.
First or last.
Yeah. Those of us who are alphabetically never mind.
Impaired.
Yes, compromised, yeah. All right, uh, moving on, uh, discussion on, uh, with Drive Tech on SharePoint. Is there someone here?
Yeah, Bob, uh, Bob Falco's on the call.
Okay. And I see he is present. Uh, Mr. Falco, would you like to uh, present?
Might have stepped away because he wasn't expecting to get on until eight fifteen.
Yeah, he may not.
That may be.
Okay, then we'll, we can skip over that. Let's go to uh, we can go to you start the Town Administrators Report if you want, Tim.
Sure, I'd be glad to. Item number one, uh, we have a request from Deb Bentley uh, to continue the Carlisle Poppy Project on the Town Common uh, from May fifteenth to uh, June first this year. Poppy Project was very successful and popular last year, I think.
And colorful.
Well, very colorful. And uh, if you'd like that to continue, then I suggest I vote to uh, concur with that request.
So I move, we approve the request for the Poppy uh, project on the Town Common from May fifteenth through June first.
Okay, we have a motion, second. Thank you, discussion. Hearing none, roll call vote.
Ask Kalilai.
Louisai.
Mode Lai, now I am, Mode Lai. Earlier than I was ready.
Snack up on you. Okay.
Did you vote, Kate?
Yeah, I did, but uh, Reedai, I'll do it again.
Thank you, okay, motion passes.
Okay, thank you. Uh, also in the packet, you'll uh, see notice from the Board of Health that uh, they're uh, announcing that along with the towns of Concord, Lincoln, Bedford, Whalen, and Sudbury, they've been awarded a State Public Health Excellence for Shared Services grant. And you see the letter there from the Governor and Lieutenant Governor as well. And uh, congratulations to the Board of Health for uh, being part of that group.
That was something over three thousand dollars, is that correct?
I think it was.
Our share?
I think it was three hundred thousand for the district, I believe, wasn't it?
Yeah, I don't know.
Yeah, I think it was, yeah, no, it's it's a worthy project. So no, no action uh, required there. Moving on, also, uh, in in my report, there's a request from the India Association of Greater Boston for a flag raising ceremony on the Town Common at some point between August first and fifteenth. They uh, made a similar request last year and and couldn't really pin down the exact date that they, are they doing this, uh, you know, across the region, so they they don't know at this moment what date they'd like to do, but it would be between the first and the fifteenth for a flag raising ceremony uh, on the common, and the board did approve the request last year.
Yeah. I did attend that last year, and it was, it was actually well done. Uh, we had a good turnout of uh, people from India as well as some other people. Uh, and it was, it was brief, but didn't disrupt anything. And uh, it was, uh, I think very much appreciated by uh, the folks who wish to celebrate Indian independence.
One of my Indian friends was irritated because they hadn't been invited.
I would accept a motion.
I move we approve the uh, request of the um, India Association of Greater Boston for a flag raising ceremony on the Town Common at some point between August first and fifteen.
Have a second, thank you. Discussion, roll call vote. Louisai. Thank you, motion passes.
Okay, thank you. Moving uh, forward, once again, on the the new Juneteenth holiday, I did detach the list of state holidays for your review. Uh, you you can see that this year, uh, June nineteenth is a Saturday and the the rules of the state are Saturday holidays are to be observed on Saturdays. I checked with town council and he he finds that many communities are are uh, i- i- in order to avoid being accused of being insensitive or kind of granting uh, employees the Friday off, even though it's the Friday prior to the holiday, even though it's not uh, the official observance of the holiday. I spoke with Jim O'Shea and uh, the last day of school is scheduled for the eighteenth, so the holiday occurs after the end of the school year, so it doesn't uh, doesn't impact them so much next year. It occurs on a Sunday and they will, if they're still in school, they will be observing the holiday on the Monday following the uh, the actual uh, June nineteenth. Uh, we're, we're, it's a little bit tricky. The Gleason Library is one of the few uh, town organizations that's open on Saturdays. And they're planning on being closed on June nineteenth, just so you know, and giving their employees the day off, so uh, that's uh, the kind of the follow up on that. I think this year, there's no compelling reason to make a call one way or the other. In other words, occurring on a Saturday. But uh, we probably should add it to our personnel policies, and I'm sure it'll come up in the next collective bargaining uh, sessions we have.
So, Tim.
Yes.
You've got twelve holidays here? How many holiday, do we give our town employees or non-bargaining employees? Like the Friday after Thanksgiving, for example, or is that, they take it as a personal day?
That is, that is an official town holiday. It's listed in the personnel policies and in the uh, collective bargaining agreements with the police and the dispatchers. So that's an official town holiday.
Okay, so, I mean, as you say, we have a year to figure it out, but I guess and are there any others like that on this list? I mean, obviously, I would, obviously, maybe not, but like this coming Christmas, I presume we're giving, I guess, the Friday off, right?
Wait, what's, what's the date on, at the?
Saturday, December twenty fifth.
So it would be, yeah, the the Friday would be the holiday for the employees, correct?
Okay, so I'm, I guess I'm loathe to add a holiday, just adding a holiday. I'm fine replacing, again, this is not something we have to deliberate on tonight, but I, since we're covering it. I'd be okay, you know, this year doesn't matter, but in a future, well, we'll come back to that. In a future year, in most of the years when it actually is not on a Saturday, I'd be loathe to just add it without maybe replacing something else, which presumably to me would be the Friday after Thanksgiving, that if people want to take it, they take it as a vacation day or a personal day. Just from budget, you know, I mean, we're trying to be tight. The other question is, if the library is granting a holiday to its employees, is that asymmetric? I mean, are we okay with that? You know what I'm saying?
The trustees did vote to take that.
Well, they can vote what they want, but I mean, the point is that you have got one employee who gets a day off and another town employee who doesn't. I mean, there's a kind of a fairness issue here, I guess. I mean, there's a kind of a fairness issue here, I guess, or symmetry issue.
Are there, are there cost considerations of that? I mean, most places aren't open on Saturday in this town, the town, town employees.
Well, the dump is open.
Dump is open, police and fire are open.
Yeah. So I don't know, I mean, I guess it's not much of an issue. I, it's not enough of an issue to make a distinction about, but it, I guess, as we, as we, you know, roll along in our personnel policies, I don't know if just because a board or trustees decide to vote something that concerns town employees, you know, I guess maybe we throw that in the lap of the governance committee, but.
Should be in the government.
It doesn't seem right to me that a board can just unilaterally say, well, my employees can have the day off, they're town employees, right?
Yeah.
So, you know, well, I think, but I'm happy to leave it alone for this cycle, because it's not, it's a new thing and it's not affecting a lot of people, but I guess I'd like to put, you know, keep it in the back of our mind to take up, not in May of next year, but rather, you know, as part of some comprehensive look at the holiday policy.
And it's gonna have to be addressed as contracts come up as well, anyway.
Right, that's right.
And I, I think there should be a distinction made between the state holidays and the federal holidays. So for instance, Patriots Day and Columbus Day are state, they're not federal.
Ah, right, they're not even on this list.
They're on that list.
Columbus Day's on there.
Oh, okay.
But, and in terms of, of, you know, value, if we want to say, look, we'd like to give you twelve or eleven days of, of holiday, you know. Personally, I think the day after Thanksgiving is way more valuable than Columbus Day.
Right, but, but you could give people the choice to, well, you could make it a floater, that's right. I mean, you could, you could say you have your choice, just give some personal days and let them apply them, but, but you run the risk, you know, what's Tim gonna do with four people in Town Hall and eight people or not, or whatever, you know, I mean.
Yeah, well, anyway, that's, I think you, between the governance and personnel, I think we need to be thinking about that. And we should think about it in advance.
Right, so we should definitely, we should definitely take that up, you know, like early next year, whatever. By the way, isn't it President's Birthday, President's Day, it's not really Washington's birthday.
It's President's Day now, yeah.
Yeah, it's President's Day now, yeah. New Year's Day, Patriots Day, and probably now Juneteenth, I doubt is, is not a federal yet. And Columbus Day, I know is not a federal holiday.
But it doesn't really matter if it's federal, right?
No, but, but if you're gonna choose, if we're gonna choose a certain number of days, again, I don't think I would choose one of the federal holidays to replace.
Right, okay, I see what you're saying. You'd rather replace, well, I don't know, I mean, can you go against the Commonwealth if they declare it a state holiday? Can a town say, no, it's not a holiday for us?
Companies do.
Well, companies is one.
Companies, yeah. That's, that's a good, that's a question.
I asked a question for council, I think that's a good question for council.
Okay.
Alrighty, let's pause here for a moment. Is Mr. Falco, are you back?
Yeah, we might have to wait for eighteen fifteen.
Guess not, okay. Alright, let's continue on, Tim.
Sure, okay, and then looking forward to the May twenty fifth meeting, we've got a fairly substantial agenda already for that meeting and and, and town meeting will follow shortly thereafter on Sunday, June the sixth outdoors at the Carlisle Public School. Anyone has any questions regarding that, that's, I can take those, but that's pretty, pretty self-explanatory, I think.
This might be an opportune time to remind anyone listening in that the Town Caucus is Thursday evening at seven o'clock. We have a number of vacancies, positions to be filled, and so please do come. Throw your hat in the ring if you're so inclined, and we'd like to, we need, we need a quorum of twenty five people, so we need to make sure that we have that.
And we're, we're gonna be meeting in Cory.
It's in the Cory Auditorium at seven o'clock.
And so it's gonna be certainly large enough to meet safely masked and socially distanced inside.
Yep. Okay, thank you.
Well, maybe, maybe we can give an introduction of sorts to Bob Falco.
Okay.
Waiting, waiting for him. This is something that grew out of the small group meetings that led to the now forming the government, the Governance Task Force, and maybe Kate and David want to jump in as well, but we looked at, at ways that departments could be more efficient and particularly with the land use boards and easier ways to share information and work product. And in, in talking with Bob Falco, who is from the head of Drive Tech, who are IT vendor, he pointed out that we have functionality already in, in our office, three sixty-five product and, for modest costs, we can, we can upgrade those capabilities to allow for shared drives between departments, employees and also between board members and, and you know, department heads and so forth. So the information can be shared much more easily now than, than it once was. And I'm sure Bob will do a much better job explaining the, the intricacies of, of it, but it, it is not as difficult a, a project as we had once imagined. I guess that's fair to say. I don't know if Kate or David would add anything to that, but it's something we had talked about in the group and wanted to bring Bob in front of the full select board before we, you know, make a decision and move, move in that direction.
No, I think it's great.
Yeah, is this, is this similar to something like Google Docs, or is it more sophisticated than that?
Got better, my impression is it has better security.
Better security, yeah, that would, that would be nice.
Sharing folders, it's only us, you know, our own drive, right? I don't know, do you, Tim, do you, or maybe, is Bob on?
Bob, Bob was on and then I told him, well, you come back at eight fifteen because you're not on the agenda.
Alright, so we can move on, but I, I guess the question I want to ask is do we have end-to-end encryption? I mean, if you're encrypted, you know, in and out, and it's fine, it should be fine.
Alright, let's jump down to approval of the minutes and warrants. We can do that, since we've still got fifteen minutes before Bob's due back. And everything else here is gonna take some time, I think.
Yeah.
The, so if I can, guess we don't, no motions necessary on the approval of the warrants, we simply accept them and thank Barney again for, did Barney sign them this time, or David did you?
Barney did it.
Alright.
Loopy.
From Zion National Park.
I flew back just for that. No, Priscilla met me halfway across the country.
Yeah, there we go.
Very good. Okay, well, thank you again for doing that. Let's take up the approval of the minutes.
Alright, I move the select board vote to accept the minutes of April thirteenth, twenty twenty-one. Do one, one at a time or two, both of them?
Let's do them one at a time.
Okay, April thirteenth.
Okay, any additions or corrections to the minutes of April thirteenth? I didn't find any, I did go through them quickly.
Yeah.
Alright, hearing none, have a motion to accept the minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Oh, I moved it. Yeah.
Alright, further discussion, hearing none, roll call vote.
Arnold I.
Ask Kalilai.
Louis I.
Mode L I.
Reed I, sorry.
Thank you.
Alright, so I move approval of the minutes of April twenty seventh, twenty twenty-one.
Second.
Okay, any additions or corrections? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Arnold I.
Ask Kalilai.
Louis I.
Mode L I.
Reed I.
Thank you, minutes are approved. Thank you, Jen. Mr. Falco, are you back yet?
Why don't we, why don't we dive into the warrant and then we can interrupt ourselves?
Yeah, we can do.
Yeah, we can do it, we can, we can watch for him coming back, we can interrupt it. Alright. Finalizing and executing the town, annual town meeting warrant, I guess, do it article by article?
You, you want us, a motion first, or you want to go through article by, how do you want to do that?
I would, well, we can, you can do it as a whole if you want.
It was here now, actually, so.
I think we should go, we could just do the consent, you know, agenda, and then maybe go through the others quickly, one by one. I mean, maybe just to review them before we vote on the whole thing.
Okay.
Yeah.
What I was asking was if you wanted the motion first and then we go one by one as part of the discussion, or if you wanted to do that.
Well, yeah, let's, let's go ahead and do that, Kate, then we'll make the motion.
Move that the select board approve it to execute the June sixth, twenty twenty-one annual town meeting warrant and June twenty second.
The election warrant's part of it.
Oh, town election warrant, sorry, that's why I'm I thought maybe I was repeating myself, as presented on May eleventh, twenty twenty-one.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, but motion has been made and seconded, now we'll have a discussion.
You wanna go just article by article?
Well, let's, let's do the, the first, what is it, first eight, ten for the consent agenda?
First nine.
Two through nine.
Two through nine.
Three, four, five, six, seven, eight, and nine. I thought we took one of those out, up there.
We took the town clerk.
Okay, so then did you get renumbered?
No, because we still have the salaries under Article Three for the other, those huge salaries for the other officials.
Okay, so we added an article and renumbered everything, that's, okay, that's, that's what I'm asking, yeah. Okay.
Okay, any, any discussion on the consent agenda? We guess we just had it.
Yeah.
Alright, Article ten.
Alan, may I interpose a question?
Yes, go ahead, Jim.
I just want to note, and it may be totally irrelevant, the Finance Committee did meet this evening and took votes on some of these articles. Those votes are what they are, so I, I did want to report that we didn't change anything on the budget item. There are some articles that we did not vote because we don't have numbers yet, and there are two on which we have questions, so. And I can sit here and pass those on to you, or they may not be relevant to your discussions.
Uh, well, if, if you feel they are, please go ahead and jump in.
Okay.
You're certainly welcome to do that.
Um, okay, Article ten, I wear an Article ten.
Yeah.
Question about that. This is a significant raise in payment of the town clerk for any analogous position that if it were appointed, there would be a contract and there would be a certain number of hours being required and there would be an evaluation. So it's kind of delicate, but I'm, you know, how, how do we ensure that we, you know, have some control over the job being done?
Yeah, well, one of the questions that has come up is, is that a full-time position?
Well, yeah, yeah, that's the other.
I mean, I only say that not because we can't mandate hours on an elected position. However, when we're talking about comparable salaries,
Right.
we're comparing them to full-time employees.
Is that the case here, Tim, that the average approximate salary of seventy-five thousand that's mentioned in the summary, is that for full-time?
It is, it is, and, and this is a thirty-five hour weekly position, which is the equivalent of full-time here in Carlisle.
But in these other towns, that would be considered forty hours?
It, it, it's a full-time position in those other towns. I don't know if, if it's a thirty-five or a forty-hour position, but it's a full-time position in those other communities.
And you're saying that here in Carlisle, we consider this a full-time position?
It, it, it always has been, yes, and the clerk does work. She works in excess of thirty-five hours, actually, it's pretty busy.
Okay.
Yeah.
That was, that was my only question, yeah.
So we don't have any, I mean, I'm a little concerned about the optics, because you presented a reasoned argument last time or two times ago, I remember, comparing to comparables, et cetera, to come up with the seventy-five, but we don't have any of that in here, right? Should there be a presentation about that? I mean, people are gonna do what, I think Kate just did and say, gee, you know, ten thousand dollar raise is, we had a sixteen percent, fifteen percent raise, I mean, boy, what's going on here, right?
Normally what happens on a board-presented article, which this is, we, somebody would be assigned to make a short statement about it, to explain it to the voters.
Right.
Right, there's, is, is there not a summary of the article in the, in the one that's in front of the board?
That doesn't say, it doesn't say much. I mean, it says, does not receive steps, but you can see from, I mean, you gotta consider the audience touches these, you know, these town matters once a year, not all of them, but some people only see what. So I look at this, I say, well, gee, in twenty, she got sixty-four, in twenty-one, she got sixty-five, okay. You know, a normal, I mean, normal is a question, but you know, a cola-type increase, and yet you're saying she doesn't get a step. I mean, I'm even sure people understand what steps are. So, yeah, I mean, I, I believe it should have context if we really support it.
Yeah, I mean, I think nor, I mean, normally, as, as in many articles, will be, the, the opportunity is there to explain why you're making this proposal to the voters, and we can do that, certainly.
What, what, Jim may ask, what, what was the ThinkCom vote on?
We actually did, did not vote because one of our members still feels uncertainty as to whether the current clerk also works part-time on another position in town.
He does.
Yeah.
Oh, she does?
He does.
What does she work on?
He is the clerk for the ZBA.
How much does that pay?
Does it?
Is there a salary assigned to that?
There's, there's an hourly rate, I don't, I don't have it off hand, though those hours are worked outside of the town clerk's hours. They're not worked simultaneously. It's, it's in addition to the thirty-five hours.
So maybe not relevant, that's like having another outside job.
Right.
Well, it is, but it isn't because it's not an outside job, it's now a town job. And so if we're hiring part her full-time, we cannot also hire her part-time, in my opinion.
Okay, so we could force her off that gig, but we still would have to hire somebody to do it, I guess, right?
Yep.
Agreed, but, you know.
I think maybe that's the right answer, I don't know.
Well, is there a, so do we have a job description for the town clerk?
We do, we do.
And then a separate job description for the clerk to the zoning board?
Yes, yes, yep. Yeah.
Oh, boy. By the way, there's a typo, Tim, there's a typo in the one, two, three, fourth line down in the italics of the summary, it's salary, but it has.
Okay, I got it. Yep.
Yeah, I don't know, I, I hate to be out in front of ThinkCom on this one, I'd rather let ThinkCom do the heavy lifting.
I don't want to, you know, I feel like, geez, you know, Kate looks like she's out to torpedo Peggy, and that's absolutely not what I'm trying to do. I'm trying to do the right thing, and I'm not sure legally if, well, of course, it's not a, it's not a salaried position. It's really a, an elected position, so I just don't know how, how that works with the other position that she has.
I, I, with an elected official, we can't mandate the hours. I mean, that, that was the whole back and forth we had years ago, right? So if we want to mandate the hours, then we need to make an appointed position, right? So then we need to take it back to town meeting. I mean, you know, we've, we kicked that around, right? So, you know, so I mean, ultimately, if, if that's what we want to do, then that's what we need to do. Obviously not gonna happen this year, but maybe we bring it in the fall, right? And then, and then it's clear cut, right?
Well, especially, I, I have to say, especially now with the salary being paid, I think that would be a, a more cogent argument for making an appointment. Well, especially, I, I have to say it, especially now with the salary being paid, I think that would be a, a more, um, cogent argument for making an appointed position rather than an elected one. It's the only elected position that gets this kind of pay. Um, so it really kind of stands out there like a sore thumb. So I think that would be another reason to, you know, kind of, but I think the governance committee should take that up.
Yeah, the governance, that's something governance committee should definitely take up. We shouldn't try that one, but.
I mean, there's, there's a lot of arguments for that, but.
Right, so let's just, Tim, if, if this magically tomorrow was an appointed position and you had to go out and recruit a town clerk, which then would not have to be a Carlisle resident, I presume.
Right.
Market to you is like seventy-five?
I, I would say, and, and in some cases, you know, the, the, the market works against you. You know, you might not get someone even for that. We're finding that with other positions that, you know, it's hard to, it's hard to recruit, but that, that real, that is the average of the, the communities we use to compare ourselves against. And this position did not get an upgrade when we did the salary survey seven or eight years ago.
Okay. Okay, so do there enough facts on the ground to say this is justified? And my point is, I guess, just we, we better put together a crisp, should be a PowerPoint, because people respond visually to these numbers like that the way it's written in the warrant, the average person, I think, would come in and say, that's ridiculous. Why are we handing out raises of that magnitude?
Well, maybe we need to do both because.
We have to give it context.
Yeah, we could show the comps.
Oh, yeah, definitely.
Yeah, and, um, maybe we should do both, though.
Thank you.
Add something to this summary. Am I mute? Yeah, um, I would say you add something to the summary. Add more to the summary. And I, my concern about doing a presentation at town meeting like a PowerPoint is it just really draws, you know, draws attention to something that, um, I think on the merits and thinking about, you know, equitable pay for work, um, that's the, that's the strongest argument to me for this increase. You know, I think if we went back and looked at what the town clerk has been receiving, you know, over the last ten years, comparable to what another employee might be receiving. You know, that's where you see the inequity of it.
Yeah. Is this, is it, uh, eligible for, for, um, benefits?
Yes, yeah, yeah, it's over, over the nineteen hours, uh, a week. It's, it's benefit eligible.
Yeah, but.
And, and.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's a weird position then, that is, you know.
It's the only one of its type.
Yeah, it is.
Right.
Um.
Right.
So what, what's our time? I like Barney's suggestion, but what's the timeframe for making edits to the text of the warrant?
Well, we, we, we'd like to go to the printer at the end of the week, uh, you know, no later than early next week. If, if the decision is to kind of punt it to the new town governance, uh, task force, that, that's fine. I, I would put the position in with the customary, uh, COLA increase. That, that, the only reason that position has increased at all is because we've applied the COLA to it. Although there's no, you know, there's no, it's an elected position. We really wouldn't have to do that, but we have.
So the COLA is, what's the recommended COLA? Is it two percent?
It's two percent.
So that's, um, that's about thirteen hundred bucks, another thirteen hundred bucks, right?
We can do that and, and let the committee make a decision on the position if that's, uh, the better way to go. Rather than do a seat of the pants kind of thing now.
I, I, uh, I think since the issue's been raised by the town clerk and we've had these discussions, I would want to approve an increase beyond the, the COLA increase. Um, because I do think from a, you know, equity standpoint, fairness standpoint, it ought to be closer to what is proposed here. I don't know if this is the amount we should recommend.
She's, she's actually paid an hourly amount? No, she's not.
Oh.
It's just, it's, yeah.
Salary.
Yeah, that's right. I, I had done a spreadsheet somewhere. I had, um, she had sent us some information. I put it in a spreadsheet and I had figured what the hourly is for of all of them and I, and was below, but as I recall, I was thinking, you know, I, I, anyway, like twenty-six or twenty-seven at the, an hour. That was going to give her quite a bit of raise, but it was, you know, bringing it up more with the numbers that she had presented to us.
And regarding a, a presentation at town meeting, I, I note that the moderators joined the call, but there won't be any PowerPoint presentations at town meeting since we're outdoors and.
It'll just, you know, just be verbal.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Your handouts are.
So that's maybe more justification to Barney's point to put it in.
Or more in the text. Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah. Yeah, if you could, if you could add, you know, some sentences on the fact that comparables were, uh, looked at across towns, of the towns that we normally compare our other salaries to, and this is what it came out to.
And also that, I, I just maybe expand on the fact that this position has not been, um, you know, is, is, uh, outside the, our salary structure. And so there've been no increases in, you know, just to expand on that a little bit more to make the case more clear. And so if, so if we went ahead and, um, approved this, you know, recommended this warrant article as it's written, um, and then the governance committee was established and took up the question of going to an appointed town clerk. That would have to be, that would, could be voted on this fall and then it would be, it, it would go into effect the fol- the following year because there's an election. Isn't it, is the town clerk up for election in June?
Yes.
And that's normally a three-year term, isn't it?
Correct.
So how does that play out if we've elected the town clerk for a three-year term, but then the governance committee recommends it goes to an appointed position?
Well, I know the town council has joined the call as well. I think there has to be yet another valid question involved. Tommy, who, uh?
Hi, yeah, I'm here. I'm sorry. Could you repeat the question, Barney?
Sure. Um, so if, um, so right now, the town clerk as an elected position is up for reelection on the June election, uh, at our June election, and it's for a three-year term.
Right.
So she gets reelected for three years, but then this new governance committee that we're establishing, um, decides to put forward an article this fall to have a, change that to an appointed position.
Okay.
Um, how would, how would that change occur? Would we have to wait three years until the elected, the term of the elected position is completed or would that be something, assuming town meeting approved it, would go into effect once it was approved and then there'd be a change in the, the town?
Yeah, so I, 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 I think you could, um, circumvent her elected term with a vote. Uh, so, you know, essentially ending the elected term. Um, but typically when a town is switching from elected to appointed, you try to do it on the election cycle.
Mm-hmm. Couldn't we say, you know, um, you could, the warrant, Barney, couldn't we say, um, that, you know, at the end of the current clerk's, uh, current term, we would, uh, the bylaw would change?
Yep. That's typically the way it's done.
And, yeah.
So. Um.
So that would mean, you're, you're saying, Kate, that that would mean, uh, this, the town clerk would continue as an elected position through, through three more years?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah. And, and I would presume frankly, if she still wanted the job, we would, she would be the one that becomes our appointed, you know, town clerk. But then the next one, when she decides to stop down, step down, would, we would have a broader choice, you know, we're not limited. And the job is getting more and more complicated. Not just anybody can step into the shoes of the town clerk. And it's not like on the board where you can kind of learn on the job and you're supported by the other board members. You're, boy, you're there. You're from the front lines and you're all by yourself. I mean, it's really a, an important job. And.
Okay. So I've got a different question because if we, if we're making the argument that I'm hearing that the town clerk didn't get the benefit of sort of wage and class adjustments prior and then sort of at the end of the warrant, we've got these gradations, sort of wage and class schedule thing. And I see in that chart, I got to ask a question with that chart, Tim. The chart has one through, oh, it's got the steps, right? Okay. So do we have any idea where that job would fit if we parked it into this wage and class grade thing?
We do, um, let me see if I can find it. We asked the personnel board to, uh, grade the position and they, they graded it as a grade ten. So the bottom step for a grade ten is eighty-nine thousand.
All right, great.
Yeah. So.
Okay, so grade ten, all right. So you, so you're saying, so that's even more, um, justification, if you will, that it's below even the lowest step. And this is, this is what we pay or this is what the state, what do these numbers mean right now?
This, this i- is the town, the town's wage and salary schedule effective July first, twenty-one, with, with the two percent.
So in other words, if I'm the library, let's you, if I'm the recreation director, I'm somewhere in the.
Rec director is a.
Universe of eighty-nine, six ninety-three up to ninety-five, nine oh-two?
That's, that's halfway. The, the rest of this, we had to break this, yeah. The top, but the top is, uh, one oh, one oh three, six sixty-three. It's on the next page. We had to break the steps over two pages. So, legible.
I see. Oh, okay. Okay, so everybody that's a town employee fits somewhere in this matrix?
Yes.
Yeah.
And that's not bargaining and not a point elected.
That's non-union, correct. Yep.
Oh, so if, if we made the clerk, the, the clerk might be more happy than to be an appointed because she'd have a raise. She'd go from seventy-five to eighty-nine, six ninety-three immediately.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right.
All right.
Are we leaving this as it is?
Yeah.
Okay.
I have the feeling Bob is not coming back.
Bob is back.
Oh, is he back? Oh, okay.
All right, then why don't we, why don't we, uh?
Take a break, uh?
Take a break from the warrant and, uh, ask, uh, Bob to explain, uh, shared drives.
Alan, may I make one other comment?
Oh, yes, go ahead, Jim.
I'm sorry, I apologize for this, but I'm not going to be able to, uh, stay, uh, for the rest of the warrant discussion.
Okay.
I want to flag one thing for the select board's awareness, and that is that, uh, although we took no vote on Article twenty-two, um, the sentiment of the committee was to, to vote, to vote against it. So, um, I just want you to be aware of that. Um, I don't know if that should affect your judgment at this point in time. But otherwise, we were in favor of the, all the other articles that have a financial, uh, or have numbers attached to them.
Okay, thank you.
Jim, could you just give us two sentences on, on what the, your thinking was?
I, I think, uh, Barney, the committee feels that what's being proposed will come over as really the preamble to a twenty million dollar building. For which there hasn't been adequate, uh, debate and discussion in the community. The, you know, and I'm really speaking for the community committee on this and that a special town meeting, fulsome discussion of this, for example, in the fall, would be something the committee would be much more comfortable with. The committee's not opposed to a final, you know, outcome potentially being a twenty million dollar building, but they, they feel that this is, um, not the right first step, I guess. And I know you folks have struggled with this, but I just, I wanted to report where this committee was.
Okay. Thank you. Yep.
Okay, well, so again, I apologize that I've got to go. I, my only excuse is I am in California.
And you've been up since early this morning.
I have, right, six o'clock. Thank you all.
Thanks, Jim.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, Mr. Falco.
All right. Well, thanks, everybody, for having me. Um, Tim and I were discussing, um, an option to allow, um, town employees and boards to have a collaborative environment for sharing folders, files and data. Um, and one of the options that the town actually already has, uh, licensing for, or pretty much has most of licensing for, is Microsoft SharePoint. It's, which is part of the Office three sixty-five environment the town already has. Um, this environment is a secure location in the cloud on the Microsoft servers that allows for us to create , um, shared sites with folders, um, that can be accessible by town employees, uh, through their computers in town or at home, uh, through File Explorer or web browser. For board members who aren't employees or for guests, um, can access the files and folders through a web browser. Um, security can be, uh, granular all the way down to the file level. Uh, it's easier at the folder level. We'll do it through groups typically. We do it through groups typically. Um, and you can give specific people access to write files, read files, just view them, not allow them to download them, um, not allow them to print them. Um, everything is audited. Um, so any type of changes are, are, uh, put in logs on the system. Um, and it will allow, you know, just a great way for sharing. We're, we're moving very, very large amount of clients to this type of cloud environment right now. We're starting to get rid of in-house servers and actually utilize this instead of servers. Um, the auditing is a great feature. The retention policies, we can keep files. Retention policy, seven to ten years. Actually, you can do indefinite, um, versioning for up to the last three hundred versions of the file. So every time a file is changed, it's automatically saved. So if you're working on a file and you just start typing, as you're typing it, it's saved in the environment. Um, and if somebody else, you can actually share a file, work on a file at the same time, and the notes for each person are saved. Um, we can limit sharing, so it's all, it's all very, very granular on what we can do. Um, so, I mean, it's, it's simple enough to, to set up. We just need to figure out the folder structure and the security structure for the users. Um, there is a licensing requirement for employees, um, and most of the town already has, um, some of the licensing. So the add-on is a dollar per license for anybody who isn't licensed, which may be forty accounts. Um, any type of board members or guests that aren't licensed, um, would just have access via a web browser. That's the big difference between licensing and non-licensing. We can access it through, uh, File Explorer if you're licensed. We can synchronize it to a, uh, computer. So you don't have to go to the web browser. That's how typically we have employees access files. Um, emailing of documents between board members, uh, is pretty straightforward. You can email them through links and it'll open up in the web browser. Uh, they can actually edit in a web browser. If it's a Word document, it can open up Word in the web browser or Excel in a web browser. Um, and the sharing capabilities, again, um, if you wanted to have a folder that you could share files out of the, uh, board or out of the employees, um, that's allowed and we can limit who can do that, what they can share. Um, it just has to have a, a group to go through the, the details, uh, of what should be shared, what shouldn't be shared. Any questions? I know there's a lot of information in that.
Is there a, I mean, does, does this require somebody here in town as an administrator?
Um, well, DriveTech would probably be the, the main administrator, would work with the departments and the groups. The department heads could administer what they wanted to for, they'd administer the files that are going there. We would administer the security. So if there was a security change, they wanted to add a user, we could add the user. You can add guests just by right-clicking on a folder and saying, invite this guest and enter in an email address and it cre- it'll, it allows a guest access.
Okay. And for, for, uh, boards and committees that are not, that have no town employees, is that easy to do as well?
Yes, we could create, uh, we'd, we'd need at least a town employee to be in charge of it or, or we could be in charge of it and work with the, with the, uh, board, uh, board members, um, and invite them all as guests. So that would be relatively easy.
Okay.
Um, we have to be careful about open meeting law and, uh, people working on shared documents. They really can't do that outside of a meeting.
So, I mean, that would have to be, you know, just some policies put in place for the personnel themselves. We can create a folder structure where, um, you know, possibly there are files in there that can't be edited or, or modified, um, and that's what they'd have access to unless we had the meeting requirements met. And then we could maybe have a folder structure that in a main meeting, they go to this and in a, in a, not in a main meeting, they access it here, something like that. That would just have to be figured out, but I'm, I'm sure there'd be a way to, to work through that.
And what kind of
Go ahead, Barney.
Bob, what kind of sort of staff training, staff support would be needed, you know, if you include this capacity?
What we would probably do is we could do group training or one-on-one training for the department heads or the board heads to talk to them about how the sharing works. And, and we just work with that with the employees or the board members and try to schedule that. There's some online training, but it, it, a one-on-one is, or a group with a, with a person like myself would be the best way to do it.
And is that something, would there be, I don't know how your contract, you know, is set up with the town, but is that something just included in your ongoing contract with us?
Yeah, we would include that. We do server management in, in the contract. And I, I feel this would be part of it. We'd just, we'd add this in and, and just work with you on it.
Great.
Any other questions?
Yeah, couple. So one, just comment to Kate's point. I mean, ninety-five percent of the work is people who aren't subject to OMLT, right?
That's correct. Yes, but he was mentioning boards and I wanted to be sure that he understood that boards don't really, it's not going to be good for boards.
Okay.
So I, one question for Bob, which is, do you have end-to-end encryption or what's the method when the documents go from your laptop or whatever into the cloud and back out again?
When the, if you're uploading files into the cloud, they are encrypted as, as in the movement back and forth, emailing them, you'd, you'd want to email links that are going to the cloud and then the link is, is, you're, you're viewing it through an encrypted connection to your computer.
All right. So if I, if, if, if I want to email Tim, if I just send him an email, like just like now, it's encrypted or it's not encrypted in its journey?
If you're using a town email address, and I believe we put the word encrypt in the subject, it encrypts the full email and the attachments. In this sense, say you have someone who's going to email a guest member of one of these groups. If you email them when, when you're in the SharePoint environment, you can say, share this document. And the options are email them an attachment, which we could block that option, or email them a link. And then it's just a link to the live document in the site and then that's always encrypted.
So that's, that's a way to protect it. So because, I mean, the concern, I guess, you know, with all this ransomware is somebody sends you, yeah, here, open this, right?
Right, yeah.
So, I mean, I certainly have no issue with SharePoint as a way of collaborating and all the points that were raised about, you know, collaboration basically, but security is my thing. I mean, I'm just worried who's going to pay attention to Carlisle, but somebody might someday shake us down.
Right. I mean, the, the SharePoint data itself for guests and people who are accessing it via the web browser would not be able to get encrypted. The way it may possibly get encrypted is if we were, some, if a town employee was synchronizing it to their desktop and they clicked on something, possibly having nothing to do with this SharePoint, just clicked on something that somehow encrypted their system. We do have security in place to, you know, help alleviate that. We have ransomware protection. We block all the sites. Most of the ransomware is coming from China and Russia. We actually block all those sites. You can't get to those from the town hall. So, and also the SharePoint is backed up for 90 days. So we can go back a day, four hours and restore if we needed to.
Okay. All right. Very good. All right. Thank you.
Yep.
Sounds like a pretty good idea. What, any action we need to take, Tim?
I don't think so. I think we wanted the board to be aware that this was the direction we, we were going to go in and, you know, unless anyone had any objections. I think it makes a lot of sense. And the cost is nominal, really.
Yep.
Makes sense, makes sense to me, right?
Sounds good. Anything to improve efficiency is a good thing.
Yeah, I think this definitely, definitely will help in the long run.
Yep. Thank you, Bob. Appreciate it. Thank you for coming.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
All right. Back to warrant. We're on, we're on Article eleven.
Eleven. We don't, we don't, we haven't identified any budget transfers at this point, but this article is there. In the event that we do, normally there are a few. But and we'll, we'll work with Priscilla to identify them. Also, the, the board has the opportunity to, to make transfers outside of town meeting. With the, if the finance committee and the select board agree on transfers between accounts, that can be done, I believe, in the months of May and June. So a combination of town meeting transfers and other transfers usually take place. So this is a kind of routine article. We, we, we put it on there whether we need it, need it or not, and then we sometimes don't move it if we don't need it.
Right. All right. Any, any discussion on Article eleven? Seeing none, Article twelve.
We just
Well, here's one question on Article twelve. So the town clerk line, which starts at the beginning of the next page, shows virtually, I mean, it's only a $200 difference from FY 2021 budget and then recommended for FY 22. So is the change in salary in, already included or?
I, I'd say no, because it's virtually the same, the same figure.
Yeah.
These are the finance committee recommended numbers for the budget. I've worked with Jim on them. They, they do incorporate the 2% wage adjustment in online items.
Okay.
And they've been kind of signed off on the
How, how does that work if the, if the, if the town meeting approves the raise, what does that do to that budget line?
Goes up seven, whatever, fifteen.
It increases by the difference between the last year and this year?
No, I mean,
Yeah.
The budget's wrong. And on that day, the day we propose it, it's gonna, by the time we get to Article twelve, it's already out of date.
Well, does the, let's, let me ask this question. Does the 106, 734 include the 65 from last year? And, and not, and not the difference?
And the COLA. My understanding, that plus the COLA.
And the COLA. So, so, because the other thing, the, the, you know, the other thing is a warrant article all by itself. So it would not be in this budget. You wouldn't expect it to be in this budget.
Right. I think it's voted separately.
And in fact, I'm wondering if this budget ever even had the clerk's salary in it at all anyway, or just the assistant and her other staff.
I think that it's been voted separately historically.
Yeah.
So you're saying the 106 has nothing to do with
Probably doesn't have the town clerk's salary in there.
That's correct.
So maybe, you know, maybe we ought to clarify that language where it says town clerk. Maybe it should say town clerk's office or something. I don't know.
Yeah, well, these all are. I mean, if you look at, I mean, they all
Departmental total, right.
Or departments, yes.
Yeah, I know, but this is the only one that has the salary in a different place, right?
Right. Yeah, no, you're right. It leads to confusion.
Yep.
It looks like, it looks like Jim squeaked out of here before we asked him any tough questions. Okay. And I agree with that. I think it should probably say town clerk's office.
Yeah.
Because it's just this year, because it's
What do you think, Tim? Is there a way to?
Yeah, I would say or indicate that it doesn't include the salary of the clerk, something, yeah.
Put it in parentheses. No. Does not include clerk's salary.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If, if for sure it doesn't, yeah.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah. It's not in there. Yeah.
Okay.
Good catch, Barney.
Article thirteen.
Article thirteen are special appropriations that we make annually.
Yep.
Minus one for the
Oh, yeah. The Council on Aging had one previously in previous years and that went away as a result of their reorganization.
Right.
So there are only two special appropriations now.
Okay, fourteen.
Fourteen. These are the long-term capital projects. Just a handful of those totaling three hundred and eighteen thousand.
Yeah. Fifteen.
Fifteen is the municipal facilities article refers only to the total sum of five hundred thousand. We took the table out because it was confusing.
And we didn't pay attention to it anyway, yeah.
And it totaled to much more than five hundred thousand. So it was, seemed to be confusing.
Yeah.
Is there going to be any presentation about it?
Or something in the summary section?
Yeah, summary's blank.
I mean, I think it'd be useful to just note that this is a, what is this? I've forgotten what their total was, but this is a, you know, small, a portion of the total needs that have been identified.
Or maybe say this is the amount that the municipal facilities committee reasonably expects to be
Right.
expending.
This is what they have to work with. Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, there should be some words in somewhere.
Yeah, and there's also an extra space between the last two lines that doesn't need to be there.
Yep.
Right. Okay.
Okay, sixteen.
Sixteen is the annual CPA article.
So where does that stand, Luke? Can you give us an update?
Yeah. So we've only voted on one so far. The hundred thousand for the trust is going to move forward. And Tom, I actually spoke with Jenny today. Yeah, it looks like the others are probably going to move forward. We haven't, we haven't voted on them yet. That vote will probably happen next week, early next week. So she said we can keep it general and then
Right. So, so we drafted this generally and then we'll add the, each specific project in the motion.
Yep.
Okay.
So will this, well, Luke, since you're not voting on it until next week, will we be able to include the, the particular proposals that you're recommending in the printed book?
In, in the past, what we've done is we've had the motion handout, as I've always said, to refer to the motion handout.
Okay.
Yeah. As opposed to the, the warrant booklet.
Right.
Okay.
So.
So there might be a note. Does it make sense that there is a note in here then that says, please, you know, review the, the CPAC handout?
Yeah, well, it ends up being anything that gets edited before, you know, after the booklet, after the warrant goes out and town meeting happens, there always ends up being a, you know, like a five or a six-page document that's got miscellaneous changes in it and it's been in there in the past. So it'll, it'll have the full motion and probably a little description of it, but it's always on the table. You know, so it'll be handed out.
You could hand it out with the booklet.
Right. Yeah. So we'll get handed out at town meeting with the booklet. Yep.
Okay.
Why, why does it say, I moved that the Community Preservation Committee recommendations for transfers and expenditures for fiscal year be approved as follows? What, that looks like a motion. Why would that be in the warrant book?
Where did you see that?
On page eight, version fourteen.
Top of the page.
At the top.
I don't see it on mine.
It's, it's the, after, after, line just starts with Commonwealth. Go down to the next paragraph.
Yeah, I don't see that on mine.
Huh.
On page eight.
It's on the version we're looking at.
Version fourteen.
Oh, yeah. Okay. I'm sorry. I got version fifteen.
Oh.
It's already been removed, huh?
It's already been removed.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. That's
Article seventeen.
So Wayne has a whole drafting thing going on here on seventeen, right? He, are we going to put in his version or?
I, I think this is, Wayne's on the call, but we can't see that. This is, reflects the changes that the moderator sent to us previously. Yeah.
Okay.
Just FYI, Tim, maybe it's already been corrected, but at the bottom of the article, you know, there's a space and then it repeats or take any other action related there too.
That's already removed. Yeah.
Yeah. We'll get that.
Okay. So there's a bunch of those. All right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Article eighteen.
Eighteen is the zoning.
Zoning bylaws?
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay. Nineteen.
Nineteen is the personnel.
Personnel bylaw revisions.
Divisions.
Yeah. Long overdue.
Yeah.
And twenty is the
Before you go, before you go past Article nineteen though, is there going to be a summary included? Because I think it would be helpful just a, you know, a short layman's description of what this, why, why we're doing this.
You know, I, I intended to write a summary. I do, personally, I think that the summaries belong with the motions and the motion handout. I don't think they're necessary. I know we, we did that last year. I think it's, you know, I can either take or leave it. I, I, I will put a summary in here, but I think we'll repeat it in the motions handout because I think that's the document that people focus on at town meeting more, more so than the warrant.
Uh-huh. And is this book going to be mailed out ahead of time, Tim?
The warrant booklet is, is mailed every
Yeah. So I do think it's useful in that sense for the people that do bother to look through it before the meeting. You know, to have it in there.
Okay. No, I, that's
You know, sorry for the extra work, but
Also, Barney?
It's either, either one. Yeah.
Both, I mean, both people who bother to look at the warrant book before they come to town.
Well, that's me usually, but
No, it don't count. No. So select board doesn't count.
No, they don't.
Slave labor doesn't.
And it's also got that dangling or take any action related there too.
Well
They all have that.
Oh, okay.
All right.
Okay, Article twenty. That's marijuana bylaw.
Which we went through.
Yeah. Okay. Article twenty-one, the housing trust.
Oh, yeah. I liked it.
Yeah.
You wrote it.
No, really.
Tom and Ethan wrote it.
Yeah, we like it too.
All right.
And again, is there, well, I suppose we go over this another time, but just to an explanation of this, but
Yeah, I must say, this one, the, the, at least should say that in 2016, you know, the town authorized the establishment of this, but it was never put into the bylaws and we're just putting it in the bylaw. It's sort of like housekeeping.
Yeah.
Yeah. And you'll have the opportunity, I mean, again, as I recall, what we do, every time we go through this, we talk about when you, you know, some, somebody, when they say, do you support the, the measure, what is the role of the select board? Somebody from the select board says, you know, gives a little explanation. And that would probably be you, Kate, in this case.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right. Twenty-two.
Oh, yeah. Well, maybe we should have that discussion.
So, Tim, did we, did the two guys who quoted read the same RFQ?
Actually, they do.
One guy makes you go through seventy-five pages and then comes up with sixty-something thousand bucks.
Yeah.
And then the other guy is at nine thousand bucks.
Yeah, no, I think, I think he missed something or they, they thought it was something that it wasn't because that's a pretty big spread.
So is it more like the sixty thousand dollar scope or the nine thousand dollars?
It is closer to the, than nine. The ten thousand is what we were hoping we'd see. Yeah. The chief's nodding, so I think I'm right.
So if we, if we vote to approve that, that doesn't mean we have to spend the money. It's just available if the committee that's doing it decides that's what they want to do.
Yep.
Right.
But it's the, it's the intent to do it.
Well, I don't, I guess I don't, yeah, I mean, that's the slippery slope argument that ThinkOn doesn't like, right? Which is
Right.
Once you, you know, once you dangle ten thousand, it's the first chip in a big pot of money that you're going to put in the middle of the table. So I think but my understanding of the charge of the Public Safety Working Group is going to be just to evaluate, you know, A, do we need it? And then how do we go about it? And if they decide we need it, they don't have to wait a whole cycle to get money to do a study.
Yeah. I mean, this is, this is just for the funding of it.
Yeah. So this, just if I can jump in, the funding goes Yeah, it, so this, just if I can jump in, the funding goes to, to be expended by the select board, so it'll be the, for the select board to spend or not to spend.
Okay.
Yeah, the part, you know, I, I mean, I know exactly what Jim means, cause I'm, I'm uncomfortable with, it does read to the uninitiated that, uh, you know, the, the, it, it doesn't say that may be expended by the select board, but it says to be expended to engage a firm to develop the specifications for a new joint public safety building.
Yeah.
So it, it really does, you know, again, to the uninitiated, it looks like, yeah, the decision's already been made, and this is just the first step.
Well, in fact, it not only seems that way, it is that way, because then we.
We should set up an RFP, yeah.
Yeah.
We have a committee that, you know, is gonna go figure that out, right? Seems like they should be the ones to write the RFP when, once they sort it.
Now, the, I, I mean, this is the very initial step in the process.
Yep.
That, that's, this is what the select board asked that committee to do, and that's what, that's what was done. I mean, Municipal Facilities just hired somebody who was like, what, thirteen grand to evaluate the roof on the, on the library? I mean, you, you need to gather the information sometimes, and that's what this is.
All right, but I mean, I, I don't disagree, Luke, I just wanna be like clear, so then now you're bringing up, so we're, we are saying, I think then, we're gonna spend this money to provide the information that will enable the Public Safety Building Committee to, or whatever they're called, to context to evaluate the path forward.
Correct.
Exactly, exactly.
Yeah.
So we should say that in the explanation.
Yep.
Yeah.
Because we should make a nod to the fact that there is going to be an independent, a separate, let's just say, um, committee, right?
Right.
You know, and I, I just, Luke, I do want to respond though, briefly, that, you know, the thing that's been muddy about this is that, um, the select board, I mean, is, we're still discussing the establishment of the committee, and so there really wasn't any formal vote by the select board to, um, you know, to say, we want to go forward with, you know, our, we're still, we're still having the discussion about, uh, appointing people to the committee and having the committee do its work. And, and the tricky part is that there's been a working group in advance of that, that has already, you know, done, done some preliminary thinking and discussion and research, and is saying, yeah, we need this ten thousand to, you know, go forward, but, you know, the select board never had a formal vote on that. It all happened sort of outside the select board, and I, I think that's why it's kind of muddy.
No, it's, it's not muddy, Barney, the select board discussed establishing a working group, and that's what was done. I mean, everybody's got this mindset that this is muddy, it's not, I mean, this was, we established a working group, the, the chiefs pulled it together, it was to get an RFP to gather information, and that's what's been done. I mean, I don't.
Is that what other people recall, that we as a select board actually voted to have a working group?
No, that, I wouldn't, I don't.
We didn't vote to have, vote to have a, a task force working group that you guys.
No, no, but, but you're.
We didn't vote to have a town governance working group that you guys established, we discussed it at a, at a meeting, and Tim went ahead and, and a, a town official can set up a working group, and that is what was done.
Yeah, I, no, I mean, let's, let's separate things, I don't think anybody's saying we did anything improper. What you said is exactly right, Tim had the purview to set up a working group, working group was set up, recommendation made, Tim on his authority as town administrator, put out an RFP, he's got answers to the RFP, that's all we've done, and that's fine. The, the, the confusion is that separately, we, now maybe not separately, but in, you know, after that was done, we debated setting up a public safety committee, which we now have proposing to do, in fact, tonight, to, you know, do that. And so there's gonna be a handoff from the working group, it's, it's parallel exactly to the governance one. There's gonna be a handoff from the informal working group that did some basic, you know, research to a more formally appointed committee that's gonna presumably meet under OML and have an agenda and DDD. So the, the piece that is just kind of dangling is, nobody said Tim wasn't under his right to put out an RFP, you know, get quotes, I mean, he could have done that without any of that other stuff. The question is, do we go ahead and authorize that, or do we, now that we are establishing this committee, do we sort of punt it and say, you guys figure out what you want? That, and to me, it's, it's a basic question, so yes or no, it's not.
This is gonna be the first step either way.
Uh, you know, I don't disagree, it's just a question of whether.
I don't see how the committee can operate without, uh, a consultant to help them program.
So then we should, and then we should just go forward.
Yeah.
Yeah, programming is probably one of the most important steps, um, that's done before any building project.
Exactly.
Yep.
And.
And it's a nominal sum to do that.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I don't, I don't disagree that it's helpful, that it would be, it's, it's needed to have the consultant. I just, I do think that, um, we, this has been, well, I won't repeat myself, but I will say that I, uh, think for this particular article, which, uh, is the first step in, uh, potentially the spending of a very large amount of money. Um, I think we need to do, I would like to see us do a better job in the description here, because, and, and maybe it's something as simple as, uh, a, a sum of money to be expended by the select board to, um, in, in, to develop the programmatic specifications, I think, I, I, I think that needs to be said in layman's terms. Um, or at least in the summary, what you say is, this is, you, I think we need to say very clearly, this is not a decision to build a public safety, a new public, a joint public safety building. This is an article that will allow the committee that's been, you know, appointed to engage a professional to determine the needs and the
Oh.
potential cost, or however you want to say it.
Okay, I, can I make a suggestion then? Because I, I see what you're saying, I think it's that last part where it says, develop the programmatic specifications for a new joint public safety building. That really sounds like you're just, that's all their focus on doing.
That's not, and that's not, that's not what the charge of the committee is.
Right.
Charge is, so basically is to develop programmatic spec- specifications.
Well, what does it say in the charge? We could just take some of that.
Yeah, the thing is, is we're not talking about the building, we're talking about, uh, to study the needs of the
Right.
Fire, police and dispatch departments.
Right, and come up with options, rather, it's not just looking at a new joint, right, it was to look at.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, okay, I see how you, um, so I don't remember what we said.
Well, the charge is in the packet, isn't it?
Yeah, the charge is in the packet, but the, we only have one, we only have one quotation that is valid, right, JRA, and they don't really have a sow, a stinger of work, but they have a list of tasks, and the tasks certainly read like a preamble to designing a building, so again, I guess I have to ask the question, are we asking the consultant to say, if we were to design a building, it is nominally looking like this, or do we need a consultant to just help us decide, do we need a building? That.
And do we need one or two?
Do we need zero, one or two?
Yes.
Yeah, well.
So that's not, that's not what these guys are proposing in their quote, in either guy, but especially the ten thousand dollar guy. They're, they're, they're under the assumption that we're often running onto building a building, and they're gonna do preliminary.
Yeah.
Needs analysis, so.
Have to do another R.
That, that's why I go back to this thing, whether the committee, I know it slows everything down, but if we're gonna set up the committee with the charge we've set up, which is really not saying build the building, it's saying, look at the problem and tell us what to do. Whether they ought to decide what kind of consultant they want, and they ought to go make, I might be more comfortable if this article said raise an appropriate transfer of funds, um, to be expended by the building safety committee to engage a consultant to develop the needs assessment, or, you know, make it more broad to give them the chance to spend ten thousand dollars, you know, when they're ready.
Can I jump in?
Yep.
Yeah.
So, I will, I will say, the way this article is written now, what you, what you're telling them to, you know, you're telling them to conduct, um, a programmatic study for a new joint public safety building that incorporates fireplace and dispatch. So if you want more flexibility than that, you should build more flexibility than that.
Yeah, this has to be rewritten.
Yeah, our, our charge, for instance, says, we, um, advise the town as the, uh, as to the provision of modern police and fire facilities that are safe, functional, environmentally sustainable and economical for the present and future needs of the town. Which is totally open, it means that they could either, you know, re, just do a new police station and revamp the fire station, do two separate, you know, new stations, or do one total, you know, one thing, whatever they need, but after studying the needs.
Right, so the question, do we, are we trying to give a head start to that group so that they have data, or that they have money available to go get data if they decide what they need?
I think the latter.
Yeah, I agree.
So then we should completely rewrite it, and we, and these RFPs are, are, can be thrown in the garbage can, because they're gonna come up with their own RFP uh, based on what they think the most, you know, what the first step is. I don't think what the responses to Tim's RFP is the first step. It's a step further down the road if they conclude that a joint building is what is the best path forward. So can we rewrite this? You want to get to the printer, you know, in seven, six days? And I'm seeing quite a bit of redrafting inside the warrant article, how are we gonna do all that?
I think we might have to have an, an extra meeting somewhere between now and Friday.
I don't think Friday's enough time, I don't know who's gonna do all this work.
Yeah, and I think, I think, I think between town council and myself, we can get that done.
Right.
Yeah, honestly, drafting the article is not, shouldn't be too big a problem. The devil will be in the motion, because that's where we want to get really specific, and that's where we'll need more time, but we have, we have more time to, to fine tune the motion.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah.
We have to be careful still with the article, that it doesn't.
Yeah.
If people started off on the wrong foot.
Yeah, and Tim, I can, if you, if you need another help, another hand in that, I'll be happy to work too.
Okay.
Yep.
So as a practical matter, you need a forty-eight hours working hours notice, right? So if you do it tomorrow morning, it's a Friday morning thing, or what, what, what's the earliest?
To, to post a meeting, yeah, I, I honestly don't think the board needs to meet again on the warrant, but.
Okay.
That's your, you know, I think we can get this done, I mean, I'll circulate it to all of you, but.
Okay, so, all right, so, so this needs to be, but. I mean, the other ones were more, I, I don't know, I, I guess, you know, the, not only this one, but some of the other ones had a fair amount of, at least in the summary pieces, had a fair amount of drafting still to do, right?
So, yeah, yeah.
Maybe we could designate one select board member, maybe it's Alan to just be the final arbiter of the verbiage, but somehow there has to be a circling back.
Uh, that, that's actually a good idea, Dave, i- if, if the board elects or assigns one, one member to work with, with Tim and I.
Yeah.
To bring it all to final, you wouldn't have to meet again.
Right.
And we can draft it broad.
Yeah. Yeah, that's the key, cause, yeah, the motion is, is where the specifics come in.
I mean, okay, so I defer to Alan, but I would like some oversight from the board on the.
All right, I'm happy to do it.
Yeah, I'm comfortable, Alan, if you're, that's great, you'll take on that role.
Yep, okay.
I do have one additional question about article twenty-two though, because it, uh, are we saying, we would say that we would, it would be an amount not to exceed that we'd be, you know, let's say fifteen thousand that for a programming study or a consultant, or, I mean, do we want to, don't we want to kind of cap this off?
Yeah, we have to.
I don't want to make it ten thousand, I'm afraid it'll be, that won't be enough, but then I don't want to make it twenty thousand, so I'm just.
Fifteen's a good number.
But I think we should agree on that, so that, you know.
Sure. Okay.
Okay.
All right. Article twenty-three.
Yeah, I love it.
That's straightforward.
How many, um, as a result of twenty-three, um, Tim, do you expect a lot of adjustments of people in the terms of their wage?
No, this, this simply reflects where employees are currently. We found out in working with council that we should have been adopting a wage schedule annually. So this is the first such, yeah.
So, so if I'm a grade nine, you know, employee, uh, and I'm, I see on my table, I'm at step three, I mean, is it clear to me what I have to do to get to step four?
You have to, yeah, you, you gotta stay alive for three more years, cause that's, that's how it works.
It's just a longevity thing, it's not like.
That's exactly, exactly, there's no, no merit involved.
Okay, all right, so it's clear, okay.
Yes.
Till the governance committee changes.
Right.
You know, and I, I, again, I'm sorry, I'm the one that keeps bringing this up, Tim, and giving you more work, but I do think that explanation would be valuable. You know, under article twenty-three, just to say summary, you know, this reflects current, you know, all current town employees or non-union employees, and, um, and that this is something that's a part of, you know, the annual town meeting or something.
Sure, sure.
Yeah, and this is just, it is what it is.
Yes.
A new proposal, it's just, this is what we've always been doing, and we've been notified that we're supposed to be accepting, you know, adopting this every year, and so here it is, this is what we bear, our various positions.
Got it, all right.
Okay, and then we've got question one, which is the marijuana by law.
Yeah. All right, now it says, oh, I see, it tells, tells the date of the town election up above.
Yep, right, yeah.
I gotta go back to article twenty-three, there's, there's no grade fourteen in the, there's a grade fourteen on the chart, I presume that's Tim, but it's not listed in the, the text in the page prior.
Oh.
Right.
Oh, yeah.
I think that's because I have an employment contract.
Well, then we should take grade fourteen out of there, if there's no grade fourteen, if nobody's in grade fourteen, why are we listing grade fourteen?
Maybe there could someday be another grade fourteen position, I don't know, you can, you can go either way, or I can, I can list grade fourteen as a, no, no current positions, we can add to the.
Then just say that, say grade fourteen, no current positions.
Okay.
All right.
We have a motion.
We have a motion, we have a second. Roll call, vote.
Arnold, die.
Oscar, alive.
Louis, I.
What do I?
You die, contingent on your, um, accepting, uh, reviewing and accepting him before it goes to press.
Got it, hey, thank you, motion passes. That was my agenda, all right, discussion of new town committees.
Didn't we have a question for town council before Tom and Ethan leave the meeting?
Yeah, what was it?
I, I think it was, uh, regarding the town bylaw, Tom, that the members of the finance committee cannot serve on another, uh, elected or appointed board that involves the expenditure of money. The board is contemplating setting up an advisory committee to advise the board on how to, to spend this new federal rescue act money. And, and I guess my, my contention that that's an advisory board that doesn't involve expending funds and finance committee members. Expending funds and finance committee members would be able to serve, correct?
Yeah, I think the bylaws about actually giving them the authority to spend money, not advise.
Right, it means they can't be on the board of health or something and spend, you know.
With a budget, right.
With a budget, right.
Right.
Okay.
Good, thank you.
I just wanted, but I, as I said, I just want to be sure that we weren't violating our own bylaws, so.
Okay. I agree with that, Kate.
All right, very good.
If we did, it's going to be your, I'm going to appoint it you.
And I'm going to blame Ethan.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody. All right, the first, uh. New committee we need to discuss is the Public Safety Facilities Task Force.
I think we've already had that discussion.
I think we have too, uh. In terms of. Membership. Uh. Last time we didn't, we did not follow through with that.
No.
Uh, and so the question is, do, and again, you don't have to populate the entire committee tonight, but the question is, do you want to partially populate it?
We only have two people so far, right?
Right.
But, I mean, did we get letters? I saw the letters for the other one, but.
Yeah, no, we have not.
No, I got, I got verbal. Uh, I, I called them and asked if they would serve and they said yes.
Okay, but I mean.
Jerry Lerman.
Yeah.
Yep.
So have we, how, how have we, or have we, um. Advertised that we need people for this committee?
We haven't yet.
So I think we need to pass our net and publicly advertise and get some people to, to step forward.
Yeah, that was, uh, that was, uh, Labor East, I guess, right?
And we need to, and we need to, but first we need to formally establish the commit, the task force.
So we can do that tonight without appointing people.
Yes.
Well, and I wonder if we don't also want to, since we know that both Bill Rizzo and Jerry Lerman. Are interested and willing to serve. Whether we could appoint them tonight and, and they could do some of the. The outreach to potential members, just determining interest and.
Why don't we just ask for them to outreach?
Yeah.
That's a good idea.
Yeah, we don't, I don't think, yeah, I think, I think we ought to, we ought to publicly. Publish, we're looking for members and, and not appoint until after we do that.
I agree.
I agree with that.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
So what's that going to mean? A letter to the editor and the mosquito?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And so who's going to do that?
I can do that.
Great.
Okay.
So I move that, uh, we, the select board, um, established a public safety facilities task force.
We have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second, you go ahead.
Any discussion? And we have a charge.
Yeah, I would just say maybe add, you know, with the, with the, um, charge that is. That we see before us tonight or something.
Okay.
Okay, um, with the charge, uh, yes.
As included in the packet.
As included in the packet, thank you.
Great.
And in, okay.
Further discussion?
Uh, we could actually, um, appoint, uh, Jerry Lerman, because the committee shall consist of seven members. I can, with at least one representative of the municipal facilities committee, and he is that. One, so I mean, it's not like we would be. Cutting off anybody else's chance of getting on the committee by appointing him. And then he could be tasked with, with doing some of the.
Unless other members of the municipal facilities committee decided they would like to.
I see what you're saying.
Yeah, I think we're better off.
Okay, all right, no, I just, all right, I just.
Okay. All right, we have a motion in a second, hearing no further discussion, roll call vote.
Arnold, I.
Oscar, I.
Louis, I.
What do I?
Read I.
Thank you. Town Governance Task Force.
It's, uh.
That's really going to town meeting, I think, uh.
Yeah.
So.
Yep.
It is, and.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
What do we need to do? Do we need to do any?
We don't have to do anything, I guess.
No, because, um, of course, uh, Wayne is gone now, but, uh, that's going to be his committee.
Yep.
But would we be saying, or maybe we do this later, but would we be saying that the select board support, you know, we recommend the establishment of that committee?
Do we need to even do that?
Well, just because it's on the, the warrant, right?
Well, and it, and it, at the time of the, it's, when it comes up on the warrant, they will ask us, you know, does the select board support it?
Okay.
We'll say yes.
Go around and take, all right.
Okay. All right, uh, okay, easy one next.
Yeah. I'm going to take, how about the Board of Registars? I'll, can I do, get that out of the way?
Yeah, sure.
I move to appoint James Bone, 180 Concord Street to serve in the Carlisle Board of Registrar. For the term that will expire June 30th, 2022.
Hey, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Arnold, I.
Oscar, I.
Louis, I.
What do I?
Read I.
Thank you. Congratulations, Jim. Uh, all right. Transfer Station Task Force. We have a, uh. Abundance of volunteers.
Is there any reason not to disappoint all of them?
Only that when we set up the charge, we had a specific number. We did, we need to change that if we're going to do that.
What was the number?
Five to seven voting members.
Yeah.
Well. That's seven voting. How about non-voting?
Well, we just said town officials, you know, would be non-voting.
Yeah, right, right, right.
So we have 10 here. Tim and Gary were going to be non-voting members. We, I mean, I suppose we could have associate members that don't vote.
That's too complicated. It'd be easier just to make it to 10, just.
Well, my worry about this, I'll just frank, is that, you know, the larger you get. The harder it is to, um. You know, work together and they're. I mean, I'd like to see.
Two different, there's two different issues, I guess. Like there's the work together, there's a quorum. So if you have 10, is your quorum six?
Yeah.
You have to get six.
It's, yeah, it's.
Right.
Half plus one.
Yeah.
Well, I'm not so concerned about the quorum frankly, because, you know, when people have expressed this interest, I, I think it's a good sign that they will. You know, participate, but. I do think, uh, you know, given the list, the composition, the, the, you know. Moving the group forward, leading it and, and, and going through some issues that they're, you know, that they really need to work on and come to some consensus will be.
All right, so let's flip it around, but let's say.
Is, um, but.
And by the way, is there no, there's no select board person on the force, right?
Well, remember, we said there would be, uh, a select, that's one of the membership, um. Uh, yeah, that's why we said five to seven voting members, but one of those is a select board member. And one of those is from the Household Waste Recycling Committee. Which, which there are two members up here, Lana and Rob are both off of that committee.
So they can, they can do rock, scissors, paper for that, right?
Yeah.
All right, so that, that leaves one.
That leaves five.
Three, four, five, six, seven, eight people for five slots. Is that what you're saying?
Right.
And how would you, I mean, let's take it at face value then Barney, that. It's too unwieldy to have everybody on. How do you choose?
Well, exactly, that's what I've been raising.
So you have a solution or just articulation?
Names.
I, I, you know, if you look at their letters of interest, um. You know, you don't, there's not, um, Thornton Nash didn't provide us with any. You know, just saying.
He didn't take a position.
Yeah, he was, well, and he just, right, he just says he's interested, but you can tell from. You know, the, some of the others. That they're. You know, they've.
Okay. Well, you're asking very qualitative judgment.
Broadly, and they're seeing, you know, more points of view, um. And now I also, so I, that's the tricky part. I mean, I think if we'd known we'd have so much interest, we could have asked sort of maybe some more specific. Questions to be addressed in the letter of interest, but.
Well, then, I mean, we could, you know, interview them.
Yeah, that's what we've always done in the past where we.
If we're going to down select, we have to have a process. We can't just decide tonight, like based on Thornton's, uh, you know, spare manner, which having.
Was doing that for three people?
Again.
Is it worth doing that for three people?
I'm okay expanding it. I'm just saying if we down select, we have to have a process.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, I think the, the key here is going to be choosing the chairman. To guide the process.
I will say that Christine Lear has expressed interest in being the chair. Um. Although I assume the committee would determine that, but.
Yeah, I don't think we need to be.
Yeah.
I would, I would be in favor of changing the, uh, personally, changing the, uh. Charge to be more inclusive of, uh, everybody here.
Yep.
I'm fine with that.
Because then what you'd have is these 10 plus a select board member, 11 that are voting, and then you'd have Tim and. Uh, Gary is non-voting.
Yep.
Okay.
So I move that we, uh, change the. Uh, that we amend the charge. Uh, to read, uh, committee membership number. And this was just a recommendation, said recommend five to seven voting members. Um. Just, how about just, uh, committee membership, uh.
Just accept everybody.
Just appoint them.
Yeah, two, two X, yeah, two, just. To include one select board member and at least one from household waste recycling, period, uh, you know. But no recommendation of how many voter, uh.
Okay.
Members.
Members.
And also the term, it says one to two years staggered, but in fact. We've, the charge indicates they're supposed to submit their recommendations at the end of the year, so it's a one-year term, basically, well, even.
In fact, I think it's a very important that this is not a, like a committee, this is, to me, this is an ad hoc committee.
It's a task force.
It's a task, it's a task force.
Yeah.
Eighteen, I don't even like, like to think of it going 18 months, so I mean. Twelve months or nine months, nine months is what I'd like it to do.
Well, look, see, it says above the timeline is that their chat task with submitting their plan and recommendations to the select board. By the end of this year, the last quarter of this year.
Okay, so, so this whole, this whole term thing, all that should be just removed. Term should be removed.
Or term can say until, you know, until the presentation to the select board has been.
Right.
Or whatever.
And then the number to include, you know.
Right, to include.
At least one and one, and that's it.
Yeah.
And then we invite everybody, so. So that's my, um, motion. For revising the charge.
Okay.
Voting something?
Do we have a second?
Second, whatever she said.
Is any further discussion? Okay. Roll call vote.
Arnold, I.
Oscar, I.
Louis, I.
What do I?
Read I. Okay, so now that we can invite all of them, I, um, move that we appoint. Christine Lear at 120 Oaknell Road, Rob Perry at 32 East Writing Drive, Lana Zamaro. At 398 Lowell Street, Karen Panico at 187 Toffett Road, John Lavery at 395 School Street. Thornton Nash at 163 Noel Farm Road, Carrie Patel, 85 Toffett Road. Um, Mom Belota at 77 Nathan Lane, Mary Zoll at 225 School Street, and John Petrie. At 39 Baldwin Road to be. Members of the Transfer Station Task Force. For a term, for a term, uh, that. Until they submit their report.
Okay, yep. All right, roll call vote. We did that, didn't we?
No, no.
Yeah, we're voting a member.
Now we're appointing a member, all right.
So that, so I'll second, um. Kate's motion.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Do we want to include, um, the select board representative? Whom I'm thinking should be David, because you were part of a working group.
I was thinking it should be you.
No, but I'm going to have more responsibility, I think. In another couple of months.
Let's, I think we should decide that with the new administration.
Sounds good. Yeah, maybe that's the person.
Yeah, there you go.
Welcome. And, and you point with the dear committee too. All righty, uh, roll call vote.
Uh, Arnold, I.
Oscar, I.
Louis, I.
What do I?
Read I.
Thank you. All right. Uh, we're done with the regular agenda. Did you, uh, have a motion to go into executive session?
Well, are there any liaison reports? Did you do that when it was going?
I did not do that, no.
No, okay.
Are there liaison reports? I guess not. All right.
Okay, so I move, uh, we, um, adjourn our regular meeting to, um. With the wording.
Enter into executive.
Executive session. Um, pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter 38, Paragraph 21A, sorry, Section 21A, Paragraph 2.